July 10th, 2012, 9:00 AM. We're going to be here.
It doesn't work there. It might be the breaker, but I don't think so. I didn't check the breaker. It doesn't work. It was all on the current off.
Okay, let's go ahead and do road call. Commissioner Yawar?
Here.
Commissioner Rosales?
Here.
Judge Shaw is here. Commissioner Shindel?
Here.
Commissioner Hallow? Carol Sweeney with the County Court's Office. Here. Please stand and join us in the prayer as they stand. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance as we make decisions for the county today. We pray for rain, and we ask that you be with our family and friends as the dynamics of Karnes County are changing and the traffic's changing. And we ask that you bless and support our church, where within may be, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Blessed are thee to the land of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why, do you want to go before the minutes?
No, no, I'm fine. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is reading of minutes.
I just have one citizen to be heard.
Did I skip that?
Yes.
Sorry, can we go back? My apologies, number five is citizens to be heard.
I just had one, it's Mr. Hancock.
Go ahead and tell me.
Your Honor, could I wait until the item is presented to visit with court, or you want to do it now?
If you want to wait, Mr. Hancock, I'm sorry. I didn't do that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now we're in a reading of minutes. Number seven is review and correct heat equipment for month of June 2012. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the man's decision.
My second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In my position, in our opposition, motion carries. Pardon me. Brenda, the tax collector, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I believe Andy used to get up and read this information, but y'all still continue to do that. I think y'all have the copies.
I'm getting to Judge Shaw. I did, I put them in their packages.
Okay. For the month of June, taxes collected were $39,015.35 total for the year to date, $4,137.62, which total percentage collected is 97.7% for the current tax rule. The delinquent for the county, year to date, is $44,917.96, which collection rate of the delinquent taxes of 23.59%. That was for the county. On the road and bridge special, for the month of June, total collected was $5,278.98 year to date, $571,695.67, which a percentage of 97.93% collected on the current tax rule. On the delinquent tax rule for the month, for the road and bridge special, $369.17 year to date collected in delinquent, $3,816.41, for a total of 25.37% delinquent tax collected. Okay. On the rural fire, current month collected, for the month of June, $3,067.44 year to date, $328,210.42 percentage collected, 97.86% on the rural fire. The delinquent taxes collected from rural fire for the month, $160.07 year to date, $2,240.01 percentage collected, 31.92%.
Thank you, Brenda.
Any questions?
Number nine is to discuss again and approve this approval of judge's report.
I believe y'all have mine for court interconnects.
Why, do you want to go over your match?
Yes. Well, she handed it to me and she said yes, so. I actually didn't hand mine to her until this morning.
I make a motion to be accept the judge's report.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, in our opposition, motion carries.
Thank you. And I'm, my assistant's son and daughter-in-law had their baby last night, their little girl, and she is on her way to Nebraska, so I'm heading back to my office because there's no one else in there, but if y'all need me for anything, LaWanda has my number, but I think I'm going to go. Thank you.
Huh? He's in the Air Force, I don't know what I s- I apologize, we need to do a little skippy here. Lauren's got to get to another meeting at 9:30, so is it okay, can you skip over to Lauren and just get her out of here so I can get her to her seat, because I have to have her at the other side. Come on, Lauren, nobody cares. She, we're going to start then on, let's go to number 15. Discussion and action to authorize- Discussion and action to authorize Mandol roofing to make emergency repairs in the Karnes County Courthouse roof. Not sure the whole Mandol paid him.
We, there are roof leaks in your existing courthouse. The west side of the roofing has been replaced and restored with phase one restoration of the project, and so the rest of the courthouse needs to at least be maintained while you're waiting for additional funding to be able to go on to phase two of restoring the courthouse. So Mandol Roofing is the contractor that did the roofing on the west side of the roof, so they're already familiar with the, with the building and they're already mobilized on site. So we asked them to give us a proposal on doing temporary repairs to the rest of the roof to take care of the leaks that you currently have. So Commissioner Yawar, myself, and Mandol met out at the site and we walked the roof and looked at the roof. I prepared a rough sketch, which you have a copy in your packet, of what was found based on that walkthrough, and Mandol went back and prepared a proposal to do temporary repairs for those, to take care of those problem areas. Essentially, what we told them is, we need for the repairs to, you know, last at least two years, and aesthetics is not the prime concern, but keeping the cost low and making sure that the water stays out is what the primary concern is, because all of these roofs are going to be replaced in the phase two construction of your courthouse restoration. What was found is, is the north, one of the turrets, I believe it was the northwest, it might have been the southwest turret, southwest turret was leaking, and, and so they included a cost to put a cap sheet over those flat roofs. And the one that's leaking, it's $1,000 for each of those turrets, the one that's leaking absolutely has to be done. The other three probably should be done because they're right on the verge of being a problem for you. Each of the turrets is $1,000. If they come back and do them later, it's going to cost more for each turret. So that's the main area that we left to deduct on. The rest of the areas are just the very highest part of the roof, around the perimeter you have leaks, and so we're proposing to scrape back the rock and put a cap sheet just around the perimeter. The middle's good. There was a vent that was blown off, so we're going to put a cap over that. And then there were some miscellaneous broken tiles and other areas that had, that had, that need to be sealed and, and made weather tight. The cost to do all of the work, including all four turrets, is $8,310. If you only want to do the one turret that's leaking and just kind of do a wait-see on the other three, you can deduct $3,000 from this price. But again, if we have them come back later and do the turrets, which chances are in the next two years, you may have to, it'll cost more than $1,000 a turret, because you're going to be having them come back to do just a small part versus getting it all done right now while they're already mobilized on your job working on the phase one.
We're looking at phase two, maybe beginning in two years or whatever it may be. The turrets, we pay for the $1,000, I know they're not, here it says they're not leaking, it's just prevent them. Are they going to come back within that time till we get, get phase two going if it leaks again?
They will take care of anything that they've repaired. You know, we did our best to spot any potential leaks, but there's no guarantee that every area is taken care of. But yes, they will guarantee the work that they've done here.
Because yeah, because like on this flat roof, they're talking about doing the whole turret, right, for $1,000, because they're not that big, right there, so they guarantee the whole $1,000 of work until we get, get it going? Or do they only guarantee it a year? What's their warranty on that?
Typically, it's a one-year warranty. Be a one-year warranty. But they, you should be good for two years. I mean, the work that they're doing there is, should be good for two years. There should be no reason why it would not hold up for, for at least the two.
It should hold up for more than that.
It should be for way more than that.
It should be for years. Yeah, I'm just asking, what do you think?
Well, see, this is one of the problems. This leak, this one has water standing on it. I didn't go over to these two. I know we definitely need to do these two. This has water standing on it. There is some spots on the ceiling where it has probably had water, but these others, I can't see anything here that's there inside. I know we definitely need to do two. And of course, you know, we're under exemption from our state insurance for roof leak. I would think that, let's go ahead and do these two years and spend $2,000 on preventing maintenance.
Because they have to come back, they're going to recharge the chip charge, equipment charge.
It would cost definitely more than the $2,000.
Maybe $25,000, $3,000 apiece, right?
Yes. And, I mean, even though it's all your money to use on your courthouse, these are, Sharon indicated that these would be approved expenses for reimbursement on the grant, because it has to do with maintaining your current courthouse. So they would pay their two-thirds and you would be paying your matching one-third. Again, I mean, it all goes to your courthouse anyway, but at least, you know, it will be a covered expense through the grant program.
See, on the top there is this platform here, he's just going to do like two or three feet right around there.
Right.
Where it's ready to go. Tiles are cracked, they're going to patch or put metal underneath the tile cracks and concrete cracks.
It's just a patch job, basically.
Yeah, they're not going to be replacing the tile. I would think, I think they're going to do that until, this is definitely, that quarter standing.
Well, because of the height of the building, I don't think that that's a bad price. I mean, they're already, they're stationed there, they got the equipment there, they got the manpower there, and it's high.
It's a reasonable price, and again, it will cost more if we wait and try to get somebody to come back.
How long does hurricane season run?
What?
I would say about, no. What number, what number is that?
Nine, no, no.
Now, Lauren, we don't have a price on here. Was this coming out of the contingency?
No, this, this would come out of the project, your project contingency, which is the one that the change order five came out of. Currently, that project contingency has a balance of $78,150. We did not run this through the general contractor, because then you're going to just pay overhead and profit on top of this price. Mandol said they would contract directly with the county on, to do this work. So yes, it saves a little bit, and, and so this would come out of that $78,150 that you have left in your project contingency.
Okay.
It's 13 on mine, is 13 or 15?
15. Do you translate that? Can I do copy of this?
It's 13 on mine.
13.
That's what I kept saying, 13. I was like, am I going crazy or what? Man, I kept saying 15, but it's 13 on mine.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Is your agenda signed?
This is the one I was on. Okay, it's the wrong one then.
You have a draft agenda. That wasn't on purpose. Carol, is there anything scripted there?
Just one?
Yes. We were paying taxes, we had stuff out of order, you got the draft, I'm sorry.
I thought I was going crazy. Okay, now we're on 15.
Are you going to come up with a change? Sorry about that.
Any other questions about it? I'd make a motion to be authorized, make emergency repairs to Karnes County Courthouse roof, that's presented.
I'll second it.
Will y'all authorize me to sign the, the local?
Yes.
Would you amend it?
And authorize the judge to sign it.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In my opposition, motion carries. Pardon me. Hold on, Lauren, I'll hand you this one. Carol, do you need this today?
Yes, it'd be great if I could take it back.
Okay, number 16 on the agenda is discussion action approved, change order number six for the Karnes County Courthouse phase one restoration project consisting of credit to delete removal of portions of roof deck, provide moisture protection on CMU behind brick and gable, emergency repairs to rotted wood at rafters and adding structural ties, painting copper cornice and downspouts at lower roof edges. Construction, construction contingency balance will be $4,710 after approval of these items. And that's Lauren also.
Okay, so, change order six consists of the items that the judge read off. The, I included in your packet a letter from the architect, Mr. Louis Fisher, describing the reasoning behind each of these items, and I'll just kind of briefly go over them. The delete removal of existing roof deck, where you see the credit back proportions of the roof deck that was not rotted and did not need to be removed, so there was no reason to remove it after it became clear that it was, there was nothing wrong with it. There's, there was an add of $106 to add moisture protection behind the veneer CMU wall, which needed to be there. Carpenter repairs to replace the rotten wood. Once they started removing the gutters in your courthouse around the perimeter, it was, it was found that there was a lot of rotten wood back up in there that you really couldn't see well from the attic, and so there was a cost to go ahead and replace that rotted wood, it had to be done. The paint, the copper, it says copper gutter on here, it's really that, that lower cornice over the courthouse. The copper, you couldn't tell from the photos, Mr. Fisher said, whether or not that copper was painted historically or not, but since we did that paint analysis and they, you know, now determined that it was painted, the historical commission wants to restore it back to be the same as it was before, which is painting the copper. They did, the historical commission did agree when we brought up the fact that it's going to be difficult to maintain the painting of that copper on the high roof elements and on your hips. So what they agreed to do is just paint that lower band that goes around the bottom part that you can reach when you repaint the windows and other portions of the building that have to be repainted, and they're not going to make you paint the upper elements and the caps on those, the hip caps on the turrets, that would be very, very difficult for you to maintain. So it was a, it was a very nice compromise, I feel like, to make sure that you can maintain your building, but still get it restored back historically with the lower portion painted, and then the downspouts will be painted. So that's why you have an add there to paint that portion of the roof. And then installing the steel straps to tie down the restored areas of the roof to the machinery structure. This was an, an item that Mr. Fisher said they did not include in phase one, because they were going to do everything at one time in phase two. But the structural engineer, when he did his inspection of the carpentry work that had been done to date, he put in his report that he's recommending that those ties be put in now. And so since the structural engineer said he wants them in there, it would be best to go ahead and put them in now. They're going to have to be done now or later anyway, so we may as well go ahead and, and err on the side of caution and, and respond the way the structural engineer has requested in his report. And this will take care of, the rest of the roof still will have to be tied down in the future in phase two, but this will take care of the, the phase one portion of the roof and get it up to current codes according to the structural engineer. So all of those items add up to $6,503. They'll be deducted from the contingency allowance, so our new construction contingency allowance will now be $4,710.91.
Oh, oh, that's detailed. Straps and the gutter painting and edge painting, it's all shown.
This page here shows you which portions of the, you know, will be painted as far as, you know, you have copper up here on all these hips and up on the high area, but they're not requiring any of that be painted, just these lower portions, which you should, if you scaffold up to do, to paint the windows, you should be able to get that lower portion when you're repainting windows. Any questions?
Well, that'd be approximately $1,600 expense, Jonathan. It says 4,710.
4,710 is what your remaining contingency is. Yeah, the total cost of the change order is $6,503, but this contingency was already part of your construction budget.
The money's all there.
So the money's all there. You know, just every penny that's spent, I believe it's a two-thirds, one-third split, so, you know, your, your contribution is one-third of what the final end of the construction- So, you know, your, your contribution is one-third of what the final end of the construction contract is, but this is part of the construction contract price already.
I'll make the motion to approve the change order number six for the Karnes County Courthouse Phase One Restoration Project consisting of credit to delete removal of portions of roof deck, provide moisture protection on CMU behind brick and gable, emergency repairs to rotted wood at rafters and adding structural ties, painting copper cornice and downspouts at lower roof edges. Construction contingency balance will be four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars after approval of these items. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppo, uh, any opposed? No opposition, motion carries five zero. Hold on, Lauren, I'll give you this one too.
Okay, thank you.
Back to number ten, presentation in order now to the Children's Advocacy Center that works closely with law enforcement CPS and setting up the conditions of electric interviews for children that have been victim of abuse. Also, they provide services for children in Karnes County, that's Tiffany College. Tiffany College, you see, welcome to home.
Hello, thank you for having me. Uh, I'm the program coordinator in forensic attorney group with Norman House, which is a children's advocacy center. And what we do is, we work closely with law enforcement and child protective services in setting up forensic interviews. Which is, when a child is a victim of abuse, especially sexually abused, they have to come through a forensic interview if they're thirteen and under. Uh, which we do provide services though for children all the way to, to age group. But thirteen and under, they have to come to advocacy center. And we do a forensic interview with them, it's video recorded, so that they only have to tell their story one time. They don't have to go tell their story a million different times, all kinds of people. They have to tell it one time, it's video recorded, and then it goes to the detectives, the child protective services, and then they pass it on to the, to the district attorney's office if it goes, uh, if it goes to that stage. We, um, we provide services to, to children here in, in Karnes County. Uh, we also are working on studying counseling with some of the families that we've been seeing. And we also do. We do trainings for the community about child abuse and recognizing and reporting child abuse. Um, we do trainings with law enforcement, with schools, we're with anybody that will, uh, listen to us, is, is really what we do. Um, and I'd also like to introduce my, my executive director and.
And it's my job to make sure that we stay open so that we can provide services. While we don't charge for any of our services, we do ask counties and cities that we do serve to remember us in their budgets so that we can continue to serve. Do you have any questions for us?
Have Tiffany, oh, Ms. Alexander, one of y'all, have y'all been working with any of our children here yet?
Yes.
Have you been working with any of our children here?
Yes, yes, we have.
And, and the difference between our own service area, which is Gonzales County, is in our area, we facilitate a multidisciplinary team, which is law enforcement, child protective services, prosecutors, mental and, and medical, medical health providers. We bring all those people together to follow the child's case all the way through. When we provide courtesy services like we do for you, we don't have the advantage of that whole team. We just work with law enforcement CPS when they bring the kids to us. Hopefully, in the future, you and your surrounding counties are going to be setting up your own advocacy center. And that way, you will have the advantage of, of having that whole team approach. There are sixty-five centers in the state, and it's, it's the goal to make sure every child in every county gets served by Children's Advocacy Center and has the advantage of, of the multidisciplinary team approach.
Typically, a county of our size, um, what type of money do they put in the budget?
Well, it's really, it really varies. Uh, we've had, uh, cities that provided two thousand a year, some eighteen hundred a year, three thousand a year. It's really anything that will, that will, that you can put in your budget that will help us continue to serve. Your problem here is that cases from here used to go to San Antonio or Seguin to their advocacy centers. They've become overwhelmed with their cases and are no longer providing you courtesy services. We're still in the position where we can continue to offer those services.
How many, how many children are front here do you serve, I mean, approximately have you served? Can you give us an approximate number?
Probably over the last two years, which I've been back here for two years, uh, probably seven to ten.
I know we, we do have one family currently that we're working on trying to get them set up with counseling. And we're just having distance issues at the moment of trying to get it set up. And kind of a common area or closer area to me.
Well, the possibility of transportation, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and, and we send our counselors out if we can or have families meet in Seguin or whatever we can do to set it up. A lot of these cases bleed over from county to county, 'cause the, the victims may be in one county, the perpetrator or the, the, uh, the event happens in another county, so, uh.
Lines get blurred.
Lines get blurred, but anyway, we try to do everything we can to either find someone in your area that can serve the families or try to get ours to serve.
We don't, I mean, we don't have a lot of resources for child sexual abuse here, other than the sheriff's department and the police department. And in small towns that, the average person doesn't understand what you guys.
Nobody. It's, it's hard to understand, it's hard for us to explain what we do. Our, our goal is to make sure the process of investigating and prosecuting child abuse doesn't add trauma to the child. And so, we try to do everything we can do to make it less traumatic.
And so, when y'all are doing these forensic interviews and they're forwarded, is that one of the things that, that like Dr. Hill always said, or one of these people look at when they go through some of these cases and these extreme measures? Is this some of the evidence that we're using to stop the trauma, you know, traumatizing these children further than they already traumatize? Is that what we're looking at, or are we looking to try to take some of that?
The, it, the interview is, the purpose of that is so that they don't get interviewed in the police station by some crusty guy like that. Or also have to go to CPS and also have to go to, uh, medical and, they don't have to tell it over and over and over.
It's like pre-victimization.
And we are specially trained so that the non-leading, it's a very open-ended type of interview, but it is a very specific type of interview, to get the child's story in their words on.
Without a confirmation.
Right. We would like to say that that can be used in court instead of the child testifying that that is not the case. But it, but it can help.
You have these seven to ten cases or what have you, there's many more that have not been reported, I'm sure.
One out of four girls, one out of six boys is what studies show us. So if you think of, you think of four women in this room, at least one has probably been a victim of child sexual abuse, and one out of six boys.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Tiffany? Can you, can call me some numbers, like of, but, uh, budgetary contributions that you might be receiving for other counties? So that I may provide it to these guys, maybe in our next meeting or something?
Yes.
When we look at budget workshops, just to show that our, you cover Gonzales, Wilson.
Well, Gonzales is our prime, it, it's our primary county, and then we do courtesies for Wilson County, for Karnes County, and for La Vaca County.
Oh, you do La Vaca too?
We do courtesies for that, well, same.
Same services you're offering for us. And we're just looking for some budgetary contributions to do to help.
Yes.
Are y'all considered a nonprofit by IRS guidelines?
Yes.
That's our auditor. Hi.
Hi.
Her mag or nice?
That will be nice and smile.
What we do, what we do with most cities and towns is, in our area is set up. But for outside our area, we just ask that you remember us and, and send whatever you can our way, just.
Well, I mean, how, how do you put a number on victimization? You can't.
You can't.
But I'd like to see what other counties are doing so we can, you know what I'm saying, so we can gauge a guideline.
And in the future, hopefully, you'll be sending those funds to your own center that will provide for you to. Can you email that to me?
Yes.
Would you include cities also that contribute?
Yes, yeah, it'll be every city, no?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very much.
It's a tough job, we appreciate you.
I'm gonna leave a little information.
Not, not for letting us to discuss it.
Kind of turns into deer with questions.
Number eleven on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, proclaiming the week of July fifteenth through twenty-first, two thousand twelve, as probation, parole, and community supervision week in Karnes County, and allow the county judge and county commissioners to execute the proclamation. Karen, that's under you, I know she'll leave a. I have it. Okay, go ahead. You can let Cheryl get it. No, it's for you. No, it's for me. Okay, proclamation, whereas community corrections is an essential part of the justice system, and whereas community corrections professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safe part of criminal activity, and whereas community corrections professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community, and whereas community corrections professionals are trained professionals to provide services and referrals for offenders, and whereas community corrections professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and whereas community corrections professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and whereas community corrections professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and whereas community corrections professionals advocate community and restorative justice, and whereas community corrections professionals are a true force for positive change in their communities. And now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Judge Barbara Niver Shaw, Carl Hummel, Pete Yower, James Rosales, and Tracy Shindel do hereby proclaim July fifteenth, or two thousand twelve, as probation, parole, and community supervision week, and encourage all citizens to honor these community corrections professionals and to recognize their achievements. Do you have anything y'all want to say? Yeah, I know we did pictures and everything.
We did.
We did those. For guys that actually don't come to court, they don't see what you do. They do a lot, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
So I make a motion, we proclaim the week of July fifteenth through twenty-first, two thousand twelve, as probation, parole, and community supervision week, and allow commissioners for it to execute the proclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries five zero. Do y'all want to?
That'd be great, we can post it in our offices.
I can have Sylvia just do two real quick, one for each of y'all, on nicer looking paper. Carol's paper didn't matter, 'cause she just went to the machine. And you don't need a free paper, right?
No.
But we'll do y'all one before, before y'all leave, we'll sign it.
Okay.
We'll sign this one and give it to Carol and then we'll.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Number twelve on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, amending road bridge budget in amount of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents for the purp, purpose of purchasing a two thousand four FY fifty that is utilized by the Department of the Mechanics Truck. Purchase of equipment was previously approved by commissioners for it in six twenty-nine, twelve, and that's four.
So you'll need to either declare it an emergency or an unforeseen circumstance to be able to amend.
Well, what is it? Does it have to say?
I just work here.
I guess it's unforeseen, you know, the worst of the world. Either do it now or do it in the future, we should, it has to be done.
I'll make the motion to approve it, uh, claim it un, uh, unforeseen.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries five zero. Number thirteen is acknowledgment of record via letter dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, from the Don Mignos Jr., Executive Director of the Texas Commission on General Rites, that the Karnes County Jail facility is now compliant, and that's Sheriff Belupka.
Yes, we got a letter on June twenty-seventh from the jail director, Don Mignos, advising us that we're in compliance now, that we don't have to show up in August. I think it's August the second this year, like we did in August the fourth, the last year we showed up, Commissioner, uh, County Attorney Bussman, Judge Shaw, Larry Pippin, uh, give us a little while, we try to get her jailed up to standards, which we did, took us a little time to get there due to being in Karnes County and Eagle for Shell being here. We were waiting in line to get people to work on it. But we finally got it up and running, so, uh.
As of that. As I told you the other day, when we did this, we thought we was gonna try to go forward and get a new jail. But we got a certificate suitable for framing, I told you the other day. This is, this is in, in the sheriff's world, a home run. Uh, that we got a certificate, we're good for another few months. So, uh, I got, I got to think about that the other day, you know, you never think about something this small, a piece of paper, that can save the county so many hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in lawsuits and just detention of inmates, so. I appreciate everybody's effort, especially y'all's, because without y'all being here, we wouldn't have it here. Thank y'all again, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Do you like you got copies of orders? I like the one that says our presence is not required. That one, I think, tomorrow. Can you get these to here? We're so used to being in the principal's office that they'll get not to be.
Thank you so much.
Number fourteen on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, amending the budget in amount of forty-nine thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents for the unanticipated additional costs to bring the jail to compliance with the state jail standards commission. And I guess unanticipated, that probably indicates unforeseen?
Correct.
Did you say yes, LaWanna?
I said correct, yes.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve amending the budget in amount of forty-nine thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents for the unif, unanticipated additional costs to bring the jail to compliance with the jail standards commission.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No opposition, motion carries five zero.
Thank y'all again, appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is gonna be number seventeen. Discuss approve, disapprove, payment of contractor pay application, number one, final and only invoice in amount of fifty-nine hundred dollars, support and backhoe service for the installation of a one-thousand gallon conventional subject system with engineering included, the community development block grant, non-border colonial projects, and that's Rob Stevenson.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, how are you, Rob?
I'm doing fine, thank you for having me again this morning. Um, I've come before you with a very simple request, and, uh, that's to pay our contractor, our installer of the subject system, five thousand, nine hundred dollars for his installation of subject system. And this was on the non-border colonial, uh, project that we're now listing. And I just wanna make sure you're aware that this is fully reversible by the degree of install.
Uh, now, Rob, on this one, is this an out-of-cycle payment or is it an in-service?
It will be an out-of-cycle payment, that's why it's all individually.
Okay. So we just need to get that paid for, is that all we're asking for?
That's it, Chris.
Okay. And that's already budgeted, correct, LaWanna? Do you think it has a cycle payment?
It's not a budgeted item, 'cause it's grand flinder.
Okay. And I make a motion that we approve the payment of a contractor pay application, number one, in the amount of fifty-nine hundred, support and backhoe service for the installation of a thousand gallon conventional subject system with engineering included, the community development block grant, non-border colonial project.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition, motion carries. I don't think we had anything to say. I don't think we had anything to sign for you, Rob.
No way.
And we wouldn't deem you rude if you left if you wanted to go back to Austin.
Thank you.
Number 18 is to discuss approved, disapproved, the updated application for pipeline costing permit, and that's Biddy.
And we're gonna need to type in the 18, 32, 11 off the agenda for this week and put it back on on subsequent agendas since they're not popular before the court. There should be four separate agreements. And this refers to basically the two, only two. So that's why we can put all four of them together at one time.
So we're gonna put them back on there ready? Just on the next, next agenda? Send an action on number 18, 19, 20, 21?
That's right. Thank you.
I did have one thing on there. I don't mind from 15. Says the company shall comply fulfilling any settlement that may occur in extension over a period of six months from the date the pipeline is active. I don't know where that comes from. Six months isn't long enough.
No, it's been extended out.
It has to be more than six months.
It needs to be extended?
Yes.
Is that it?
That's right. Especially in the range right here.
Number 22 is discuss approved, disapproved, to advertise for a road and bridge engineer administrator for Karnes County and accept applications as required by statute next week.
All right, as you know, we have a lot of problems with road and bridge. It's a tough job. We need to advertise for a road and bridge. Needed more before that, more than a month ago. I've gotten a lot of comments and questions about what's happening. And I can tell you that I can name a whole bunch of things that that have been done and haven't been done in the road and bridge department. And I feel like we do need an engineer and administrator to handle the department. Complaints coming into the judge and to me, and I don't know the other commissioners here, but about the way operations go. In county roads that, well, the paved road at Falls City, 207, was torn over by all companies and it wasn't repaired by the all companies. Jeffrey and his crew finally went out there and repaired it. I think that all companies agreed while they were working there to repair it, but I don't think Jeffrey stayed on it and got them to repair it. Is that right? Y'all repaired it yourselves?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Kind of wrote 208. I noticed they've been putting some dirt on 208. There was two, two pipeline companies working there and it tore up the road. It had a bunch of powdered out spots. And I went out there and got the names of the companies and called from them. And they said, yeah, we'll fix the roads, but it ain't always to fix it until we're finished. They left and they didn't fix anything. Jeffrey sent a crew out there and they patched up the hole and didn't get the company to tend it. So I gave them the calls and I'm not talking. Anyway, this, the walk across the bridge, it's supposed to be repaired. There's, piers down in the water, exposed in the water that need to be some put around. I understand we've had a Dozer rented for, since January or February that's supposed to be working on that. And it's been clearing fence lines, I've been told. I don't know where they've started. Have you started on that bridge yet?
No, sir.
Is it true that that Dozer was rented to repair that bridge?
We use it for a lot of things, Pete. We use it on, we use it on a road job down, down the road.
I know you didn't tell her.
Road in. And we just, just ain't got enough people to go around to get everything done. What needs to be done as fast as we're getting tore up.
The bridge has, it needs to be repaired. So, anyway, we are in need of a road engineer.
This is, this is just one position, not an engineer and administrator.
One position. Pete, can I say something? Ask the judge. Judge?
Mr. Beam, you're supposed to sign up to talk, but go ahead.
Hold on. I want to talk when he's done, then.
Well, see, that's why I don't want to do this. And I think that's, I think that's out of line to do that. Let's stay with the meeting because then everybody wants to do it. If we allow one person to do it, it becomes discrimination. But it becomes discrimination and it's not fair. Go ahead, Pete. We're gonna session here. Let's just get this done. I don't, I don't need a wall around me, bro.
All right, so therefore I'm gonna make a motion, we advertise for a road and bridge engineer dash administrator for Karnes County and accept applications as required by statute.
I'll say your motion.
Okay, before, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Excuse me. Sorry for doing it. I was like a... Okay, I know that the last time the motion went through, right? I think it was three, two?
I don't remember.
Okay. It was something three, two, right? I guess it was basically, I've been real busy with some, with another case I had going on, so I haven't got to look into this a lot and everything, but it's over with now. So, I apologize. I didn't get all my ducks in a row for today. Did we do that, did we do that right the last time? Because I know that there's a statute that I had there, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it. I just had another case that just finished yesterday, that we didn't follow proper procedures in, in, I guess, in the three, two count vote to get rid of Jeff. Beatrix, not Jeff, but the road administrator that we have now presently. Not to mention your names directly. Wasn't there, Jeff?
What happened, what happened, Jane, is the motion that was initially made was a removal motion, and that was mine, and it died for lack of a second. And then Pete, Pete, let's go back to the minutes. And we can look at it in the minutes. It's right.
Because there's a statute there, and I had it.
It either says that he is or he is not. And I think that the minutes said that he would stay as superintendent or whatever. And actually, I think what it actually, the minutes came out to is he was never removed as administrator last time. Okay? And so, for it to say that he stayed as superintendent was kind of, and I looked at it, and I knew this, this was coming up, and we can still amend that motion. But when it said superintendent, if, if he's replaced, we can't say that he's gonna stay as superintendent. If a new road and bridge administrator comes in, they can do whatever they want. But do you have the right to advertise for one right now? Nothing was technically done last time.
Okay, so if nothing was done last time, and he's still the road and bridge engineer administrator, whatever you may want to call it, okay? We're gonna advertise for another one on top of his position?
No. I know Pete...
I'm kinda, like I said, I'm sorry. I was busy, but...
No, no, you're fine.
Okay, so I just want to get this straight. Can we just do that? Just advertise for another one right there while he's still our road and bridge? Nothing was done the last time, and we didn't get nothing solved the last time. He's still our road and bridge administrator right now.
If we choose to seek a new road and bridge administrator, we can advertise. And everybody was gone with you doing the other things. But I know Pete had a long conversation with Ross, and I do believe that Ross told him you could put this agenda item on there. Is that correct or incorrect?
That's what he said. Put it on.
Ross, Ross said that we could, let me get, I'm sorry. Give me a, give us a, advertise for road and bridge engineer administrator for Karnes County and accept applications required by statute. So, we can legally, we can legally advertise for this even though Jeff's still our road and bridge administrator?
Yes. He's still road and bridge administrator until we have him on.
Judge, could I, could I ask our county attorney, Mr. Bussman, shed a little light on this? Do you, have, did you shed any light on the subject for us, Bob?
What you're, if I understand what you're trying to do, you're trying to get a engineer or another administrator in the wings just in case to get rid of Jeff. I'm not sure that, I do not agree with that really. I believe that you don't, and I have not looked at the statute. But I believe, I did not look at statute because we were involved in the bottom of the other thing also. But nevertheless, I believe, I don't believe that that is the correct reason on that because you need to advertise, but you need to advertise when you have a vacancy.
Right. And we don't have a vacancy or an open seat opening until we correctly go by statute and we get rid of the road administrator that we have now.
That's, Dave, how did you understand that?
Well, the statute requires that we give 20 days notice to the road and bridge administrator to terminate his job. We, in essence, did not terminate his job, or his employment, I should say. And so, his employment remains. And whether he remains in the capacity of superintendent, based on the motion, whether he remains in the capacity of road and bridge administrator is the question I think that y'all have to answer. But the issue is, you still have to give him notice to remove him as administrator. You must give him 30 days written notice.
To Mr. Beatrix. Right? He would have to have that. But if we're gonna hire, if we're gonna advertise for a road and bridge engineer...
I would say you can advertise for anything you want to advertise for. You don't have to have a vacancy. You're not advertising if there's a vacancy in the position.
What would be the timeframe like? I mean, are we gonna get rid of Mr. Beatrix or not? Or, I don't just want to, no disrespect to anybody, but I don't want to bring in these people and waste their time and everything. Come over and give us, give us the application, to talk with us and everything, and then we don't, Jeff stays with us. And I'm not saying nothing. You know what I mean? I'm just trying to get this through my head right here, what we're doing. I don't want to get bit in the butt later on because we're jumping the gun.
Well, certainly I would, it wasn't done right.
To begin with what Bob was saying, and it does not pass the smell test.
And it should have been done differently if it was going to be done at all. That would be my thoughts, and...
Probably, probably two items. One to vote on whether or not to remove or notify the administrator that you want to use. And then, if that happens, then you advertise for...
That makes good sense to me, Rob.
But also, I already agree, what is the purpose of having an engineer at this point? What you really need is more workers, it sounds to me like.
But basically what you're saying is our legal counsel that these aren't gonna, these aren't gonna apply because they're not put on here, right?
I, I think that's correct on the, what you want to do and what's on the agenda for today.
For today.
That's correct.
Kind of like having a ranch manager when you don't have any workers, huh?
Well, I mean, but you gotta have a plan, Rob.
Because the...
You gotta have a plan.
Because the, I'm sorry. Because the next one says, and I don't mean to jump to the next one, but it is part of this one anyways. It's setting Saturday range a starting date, but we don't know the starting date or anything.
But if we're gonna go through budgets and we're looking...
Or if we have to dismiss him, if we have to dismiss him, we can look for a note where he's gonna stay in charge while he's not there.
If, if we advertise, that's just an advertisement. That's not doing anything. So what's legal about advertising? I'm confused.
We might not be all fine.
That's right.
Well, and then the advertisement just goes by the way side of the...
Right. We still got our man.
So, this is just to advertise. That's all we're doing is advertising.
But on the, on the next one that says set Saturday range a starting date. So it's not just advertising, it's advertising...
You have to have that for your advertising.
But with a, with a date, with a date too?
So the potential applicants will know if they need to give six months' notice, and your starting date's before six months, they don't, there's no need for them to apply?
All right, now, first, if we advertise and we set a salary, we can start it. We can set it in our budget. All right. If we find someone before then, they're ready to start, we can amend our budget so it can start before then.
But you're starting dates, you're basically saying you're aiming at...
We, we have to aim at that, set a budget for that. And if we get someone who's ready to start before then, we have to amend the budget for the salary.
Statutorily, they're two different jobs, road administrator and engineer. They both handle the same duties. If one is, statutorily, they're two separate positions. That's one of the reasons why you can, you can advertise for an engineer and while you have a administrator, you don't have to vacate that position in order to advertise for an engineer.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
You can hire, you can hire, you can hire your engineer and still have your road and bridge administrator. You just wouldn't be a good different slot.
So you're saying that engineer, administrator are two different jobs? 22 states here, engineer slash administrator. So basically, that's, that's, you know...
Either or.
Either or. Right? See, now, he's saying his intentions are for one. His intentions are, it's for one job, but here it has slash. It doesn't say an or.
But if there's a removal, there has to be 30 days. So even if you advertise and there's not removal, you can advertise and do nothing, or you can advertise and remove, and leave your options open to see if you can hire an engineer or if you can hire somebody. I think that's all you're looking at, Pete. Am I wrong in what you're saying?
I, it's gonna be tough at best because there's no place for this guy to live. And he's...
But that's not on here or nothing.
I, I know, but I'm just telling y'all, you have to put more money in the budget.
We had a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose.
James and Carl oppose. Motion carries three, two. Number 23, discuss approved, disapproved, advertising for a road and bridge administrator and set salary range and starting date. Pete?
All right. As Reggie said, we have to budget for this. So we have to, we're starting a budget workshop this afternoon. And what salary we think it should be paid. Of course, I have an idea of if we're gonna advertise somewhere, $0.16, $80,000. I don't know how I would state that, but that's basically what I had in mind for engineer. So that's what we're gonna look at, is an engineer instead of administrator? Or an engineer and administrator?
No, but Betty said that was two separate jobs.
Statutorily, it's a fine...
Right. They're two separate jobs, definitely. I just don't want to get, like I said, bit in the butt here. That's why I didn't go along with this. So I don't know why I'd go along with this one. But the legal counsel also saying that it's two separate jobs, and you want, want to be, I mean, you want it to be both, so I don't know which one it is.
Well, I just remind the court, y'all are going to give...
I know where you're going at.
The advice of the county attorney.
You know, I, I'm just going, you know, I know where you're going at, Pete. It's, yeah, I know exactly. That's what I would want, engineer and administrator. You know, until Betty said that statutorily, they'd be two different jobs, I probably wouldn't have snapped on it, but now that she mentioned that...
They define them as two, two separate, they have two separate definitions. They, they control the same position. They, they do the same function, I should say, in a different way. Statutorily, they're defined as two different, they have two different sets of qualifications, I should say.
So you'd either be hiring an engineer or an administrator. You may hire an administrator if you don't have a qualified engineer.
That's correct.
Okay. And, okay, I understand.
So, so should I, you're, you're saying, Betty, that I should have, I should have written that out as hire a road administrator who is an engineer?
No.
What are you trying to tell me? That's not two different jobs. It could be one job.
It's defined by statute, it's, it's two different, they have two different sets of qualifications than statute. But that, they're the same position.
The statute technically doesn't lean towards an engineer, but says if you do not have a qualified engineer, apply, you may hire an administrator.
And then it gives the definition...
But it doesn't lean towards an engineer.
...as administrators.
Yes. And if that position, not as an engineer, or if you go to an administrator. That's how that's...
But the problem is that if we're going at 60 or, you're kind of going to 60, 80,000, that's for an engineer. And if we're gonna go with an administrator, you know, we're, you know...
Well, but you can always advertise...
And they may not be a qualified engineer.
Right. But if we don't, and we're advertising just for 60, 80,000, we're gonna have to advertise administrator X amount of dollars, engineer X amount of dollars.
You can advertise the position commensurate with experience and see who applies. You don't have to give a figure. You can see what applies and what you're drawing in.
So that when they advert, when they advertise, you need administrator because you're just advertising for the amount of money for an engineer.
You could, you could advertise for a road and bridge engineer slash administrator commensurate with experience. If the, if an engineer applies, you can see the engineer's experience. If somebody is an administrator applies, you can see that experience.[1727.03]
Maybe we could pay, maybe we could pay, Sa, salary, salary will vary with experience?
Yes, commensurate with experience.
Right, yeah, because not put an X amount in there.
Exactly.
But we need an X amount for the budget.
Well, we'll have to determine that, whether it's an engineer or administrator.
We have to figure out, we have to sound, figure out what it's gonna be with fringe and everything, cap it at a hundred thousand, you know, something like that. And that's with fringe and all, we'll be cap it at something like that.
Who's going to prepare the advertisement?
Not I, send the baby.
Not I, send the golden goose. Wait, there's no action on it?
Well, we can advertise, what are, what are you waiting to do, Pete?
Well, I'll have to see what all of...
Well, we can still advertise commensurate with experience, you don't get any applications, you don't get any, I mean, it's not the first county job or county blanket that's been put out without nothing. We have all kinds of open positions floating around in this county that have been approved to be hired, they're posted all over the courthouse, in the paper, and everywhere else.
Well, Bob's up next to retiring, retiring, come back as road and bridge. I'm gonna draw him out.
Number, number twenty-three, uh, is to discuss approve, disapprove, advertising for a road and bridge administrator. I make the motion that we approve advertising for a road and bridge administrator and set salary range and starting date, and we can, huh?
Second vote at two.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, yeah, okay, that, on twenty-two was, and accept applications as required by statute, and then the other one's the same thing, except you set salary range and starting date?
Right, ones, ones to advertise for the position, and ones to, we had to discuss budget, budget has to be discussed. Budget's always a separate item of the position, but budget always does come in.
We kinda voted on it twice, except that we're gonna...
No, not technically.
But we're gonna go ahead and vote it up to accept applications, the other one's set salary?
Yes.
No, with that point two, we don't have to mention salary.
We're just looking at statute, so go ahead, what are you doing, Jane?
I'm not doing, I'm not doing anything, y'all are voting right now.
No, we're voting, but you, I said all in favor.
Oh, no.
I had all, all... Judge, she seconded it? Did he seconded it, Tracy? No, wait, who seconded it?
Pete.
Pete seconded it, and I said all in favor, say aye, Tracy, Barbara, and Pete said aye, Carl said no, James said...
I'm saying no.
James says no, motion carries three-two. Number twenty-four is discuss approve, disapprove, request for permission to retire from office of the county attorney no later than the twentieth day of July, two thousand twelve. Uh, I respectfully request that Betty Yoder remain my successor, however I'm aware of the fact that the appointment is your business, and I do not want to interfere, but I would appreciate your consideration in the appointment of Betty Yoder, and that's what Bob, Bob told me he was pulling that item. Number twenty-five is same and a bill.
The, the seeker that I have would like to speak on that agenda.
If he's pulled the item, we're not gonna speak on it, that would be, I think that would be fair.
I think you said earlier, good.
But, but...
I, I don't need to speak, it was only this time.
Yes, sir, okay, we're all on the same page here, let's go into, thank you, Mr. Hancock, Mr. Bussler, and let's go to payment of bills. LaWanna? LaWanna's package, is your package? Thank you, LaWanna. Seven, ten, twelve, right?
Just point out a few out of the ordinary expenditures on page one. The total of election expenses paid in this cycle is four thousand one hundred fifty dollars and twenty-eight cents, and this is for the election judges, as well as delivery of voting boxes and the rental of the U-Haul to deliver the ballot boxes, et cetera, to each precinct, and mileage and fuel reimbursements.
On page, no, I'm sorry.
It's on page one. It's several different items.
Okay, I got you.
I just can't get the total. On page three, there is a payment to correctional management, maintenance incorporated for thirty-three thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars. This is part of the amendment you did earlier in the meeting to facilitate the completion of the jail repairs to come to standards. Because it was only a matter of a week between the last accord date and the bill submission deadline, the total payments this cycle are a hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. So, expect a big bill run at the end of the month.
On the election thing, LaWanna, you brought to my attention, we're gonna have to post something for Roddy again for voting machines, and so we'll get something this afternoon.
So, we'll have to have a mid-months to cover those costs.
So, we're gonna have to do that again? So, um, I'll give Carol, and we'll get something, I'll give Carol after this meeting, the specific meeting of the afternoon meeting, 'cause we need to post something for Roddy afternoon, so we need to get our seventy-two hour exams, and Carol and I will do that after this meeting. So, that will be coming back again.
Unless there are any volunteers, I'm open.
I got your room full, if you're...
I, I mean, all my volunteers are always unanimous between all the commissioners on...
I make a motion, we pay bills as presented, and once anybody sees something unusual or has any questions.
I see.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries five zero. Any of you guys to initial those coming, please? The next deal is number twenty-six on the agenda is report of fees, fines, and money collected by the following departments. County clerk, Carol, you gave yours, do you want me to read it, or are you reading? Carol, the grand total was seventy-six thousand, four hundred and two dollars, lesser checks disparage, she had sixty-two thousand, eight thirty-three oh four. Bob, are you reading, uh, District clerk, I saw her walk in, can you read yours?
No, I'm not, um, I just wanted to say that, good morning.
Good morning.
My report is still not complete, um, again, my, with tax cases, the delinquent court cost, it does take us more time to input, um, researching, going back where past payments were divvied, and so, and it's time-consuming, and we are almost complete. So, once my tax cases are all input into the federal country, I can generate a report.
You're changing from the paper system to a...
Yes, and, and...